And Bridget, onto the committee at hoc for tonight. So that we can proceed. John, I'll turn it over to you.
John, you don't have, okay.
Thanks, I'm totally prepared to chair the meeting.
That's great to hear.
Bridget, you should do this.
I should? No, not today.
All right, so I guess the first thing we should do is ask for, we open the meeting and then we'll ask for a motion to ask questions about the minutes of our meeting on February 11th. And since, let's see, was.
We're gonna have to table that. We don't have the right number of people here.
Well, that's good. And let me turn, turn it to the next. Okay, so the next item we have donation, loan, supplies of equipment, which is number two in the packet. And was kind enough to send over.
I'd be happy to read it if you want to assign that to me.
Just to let you know, that was revised.
Yes, I've got the revised one in front of me.
Oh, I could recognize that voice anywhere.
Be nice.
Dr. Weiss, if you'd be so kind.
I would be happy to. With your permission, do you need me to read all the whereas's or may go to the now heretofore?
Let's go to the end.
Okay. Now heretofore, the Board of Trustees of Nassau Community College hereby resolves as follows. The Board hereby authorizes Nassau Community College President, as of April 4th, 2020, to make a loan of or donation of equipment and supplies, which are not currently utilized by the college to local or state organizations in order to enable such organizations to properly respond to the COVID-19 pandemic or any future public health emergency or crisis. Number two, the President shall work with relevant college constituencies to ensure that the equipment and/or supplies are available for donation and/or loan and are not currently utilized for community college purposes, or alternatively, that relevant college departments are able to spare the equipment or supplies in order to assist with the pandemic response by local or state entities. Number three, the President shall have the authority to enter into loan or donation agreements on behalf of the college, as such agreements may be required to effectuate this resolution. Number four, the President shall work with relevant college constituencies to ensure that proper tracking of the donated or loaned assets is maintained and will pursue any available mechanisms for reimbursement that may be available in order to replace donated equipment or unreturned loan equipment as expediently as possible.
Any questions? None? Could I get a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Bridget, is there a second?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
I'll second.
Either way.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none? Okay, that is done. There are no pending procurement agreements. So that makes it easier. And the next would be the Vice President's report.
John, I just want to ask a question. I have Kathy Weiss, yourself, myself, Bridget, Donna Tumman. So that's only five. Am I missing one?
George Cibron is on video, audio, not video.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I missed that. I just wanted to make sure that we had to be able to carry, to move that.
And Wanda's on telephone on the bottom.
Oh.
Yeah, somehow, but I tried the video, but it doesn't seem to be working.
Oh, welcome, Wanda, by phone.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Wanda, do you want, you know, you could put the code as opposed to the link.
Oh, okay, I'll try the meeting ID.
Okay.
See what happens.
All right, so we have no pending college procurements. And we'll go to the Vice President's reports.
So, thank you, Board members. We wanted to provide a brief overview, as I mentioned earlier in the week. I guess it would have been, would have been Monday earlier. Today's Tuesday. So, Vice Presidents are going to spend maybe two to three, four minutes just illustrating some of the high-level engagement opportunities that are applying to equitable endeavors regarding recruitment, enrollment, and student success. So, if I can share my screen, do I have that capability, Elias? I do. Thank you. So. Everyone should be able to see my screen, right?
Yeah.
Yep?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Start off, and in order, we have Vice President Mascarella, then Vice President Kerrigan. And we have Vice President Isquero, followed by Dave Follett, who will be representing Vice President Gonzotti. And then Vice Presidents, excuse me, Collins, will end this brief, this said, presentation, probably around 15 or 20 minutes. I appreciate your patience. We think it's good for the Board to know what is happening at the college, especially given the situation. But it's good for you to know what is happening in regards to recruitment and engagement and success for our students. So, Vice President, Dr. Mascarella, you want to take it away?
Okay, great. So just quickly, we've got a few items here. Obviously, everything, you know, is impacted by the situation we're in right now, but we're trying to maintain continuity. You know, one of the areas that I'm responsible for operationally is textbooks. This has been something that we've really had to work on for the spring semester, as well as going into summer and fall. A really bright light on this is that the bookstore contractor, Follett, was able to work with the various publishers that, you know, we work with, providing textbooks for students. And any student that's enrolled in courses this semester is able to access the electronic version of the textbook now. I teach a course as well in the engineering department that I signed on. It was a very, very easy download. And that makes a very, very big deal, obviously, because students right now are not able to go to the library, which is something that they rely on to get copies of textbooks that they can't afford to buy. So the electronic versions were made available to them free of charge. We also, I'm working with Vice President Isquero on an initiative that was brought up to us by Follett, the bookstore contractor. And Julio will go more into the financial aspect of this. But the bottom line is that we're gonna make an arrangement, or suggest making an arrangement to the Board, where our students will be able to, for a fixed price, have all of their textbooks available on the first day of class. So that's a, you know, a very, very big initiative and something that has been proven to improve success and persistence on the part of students. So, next slide, please. So on the, we've talked about this project a little bit in the past here, the 108 Duncan Project renovation for the culinary program. But I just wanted to mention it because it is an area where we feel that the completion of this project is going to, you know, benefit a large number of students and provide marketable skills in this area, especially in the New York area for this kind of program. And I wanted to assure everybody by including this here, that we're not dropping this because of the situation we're in right now. We intend to continue to finalize the design, get ready for bidding. And I should actually say that we're already out on bid for this project and that we have a bid opening scheduled now for May 27th. And that was put together by our, you know, Chief of Procurement, Phil Capello, who's also listening in here. And we're gonna go along just as if we were doing this, you know, with none of the constraints we're operating under right now. So we expect to be able to open bids, make an award, and carry on the project so that we can get it open by fall of 2021. Okay, next word. And it, also at Dr. Williams' suggestion here, we undertook an initiative with our Master Plan Consultant, Canon Engineering, Canon Design, to establish a program known as Sense of Place. This is a term, if you see up in the top, the A definition of Sense of Place. I essentially just found on the, on the web, but there are many of them out there. It identifies a particular location with certain characteristics that make people feel a sense of belonging to that place. And that's what we're working on. We have a very, very qualified consultant to work on it, on this with us. Matter of fact, we're gonna, we already had a kickoff meeting on it. We're gonna have the first meeting with a consultant via, you know, Zoom or the appropriate methodology here to continue talking about it. We've got a very large campus constituency that is involved in the process. And that will include wayfinding, you know, a little enhanced wayfinding on the campus. And then features that enhance the sense of place, which is, you know, essentially identifying parts of the campus with a sense of belonging on the part of the students that associates them with Nassau Community College. And then those kinds of things have been proven to foster pride in organizations and in the way of institutions of higher education, continued motivation for students to complete there. So that's what we're hoping to get from this initiative, and we're gonna be starting it very soon.
Thank you, Vice President Mascarella. And for the last slide, the Sense of Place, I appreciate that you mentioned my name. And really, it's a, as you mentioned, there's a lot of literature out there. It's a true reflection of what our students illustrated to me when I was walking around and listening to them. And we know that there is, you all think about the places that you like to go and the places where you feel comfortable and while you return. And it's because of the way, you know, you're treated and how you see yourselves there and a reflection of you and that they, they care and value you as an individual. So it's, it's definitely a big initiative, as Vice President Mascarella said, and I'm really happy that we're pursuing it. So I want to say congratulations. And last month was supposed to be Vice President Kerrigan's first month. And he was supposed to be able to meet all of you face-to-face, in person. It would have been fantastic. You all would love him. You'll still love him. But it'll have to be done virtually at this point in time until we can all gather in person. But Vice President Kerrigan, would you take it away for a few moments?
Thanks, Dr. Williams. And thank you to the members of Board for welcoming. I appreciate it. It's great to be here with a wonderful team. So institutional advancement is the area of the college that tries to identify, cultivate, market, and communicate and solicit resources for our students. And one of the biggest areas that we oversee is our sponsored research programs. And this area works with federal, state, and local entities, public and private, to bring grants to support our student population. One of the largest areas, and as far as equity, is our Perkins Funding, a federal program that is really designed for our career and technical education components. And so with the COVID-19 situation, we adjusted some of our Perkins Funding to really try and support our remote and virtual learning experiences and to add more funding for our technical assistance tutoring for students online, which you can imagine is a very important component of our remote education at the moment. We've also been finalizing some student aid assistance through our Trio Programs for students with disabilities. And that's important because our students with disabilities really are a valued member of our community. We want to make sure we're able to get that education through our Trio Program. And an exciting piece that we're doing this summer will be allowing some of our underrepresented student populations to join a virtual research experience at Stony Brook University this year. And so through Bioprep, which we've been running for a few years, we'll now have that virtual research experience for our students, which we think is very important. So some of the things we're doing currently, in the future, we'll be looking at our Perkins Application to really see how we can increase equity for our career and technical education programs. And as we are a minority and Hispanic-serving institution, which gives us a special designation, there are a lot of special grants that we can take advantage of in that area. So we're working on building those as well. And to really, for the future success, to work to increase our student outcomes so that our students have the best technology and the best experience when they join the workforce, especially through our career and technical education programs. The next area of the college that we've been working on, that really brings a lot of resources to bear, is through our foundation. Our foundation solicits and brings lots of scholarship and resources to our students in need. Here you can see a couple of the different examples of the current scholarships that we offer. And through our Emergency Fund, we've been able to bring in some additional resources to support our scholarship for student in need. One of the things we're doing now, through, through increased analyzing these scholarship opportunities for diverse students, is looking at our donors and see where some of their interests are and align them with our student population. We offer about 448 total scholarship opportunities annually, and that represents 314 different scholarship accounts. Our Emergency Fund has been well-received by, by our constituencies, and we've raised over $24,000 now, as of today, to help support our technology initiatives, to support our scholarship initiatives. And we're also helping our programs through Food and Security in the Nest and our Dean of Students in supporting some grants that she's making to help with the household issues that our students are having. As some of them have, some of the families have now lost their jobs, and our students are the sole providers for their families. The last piece that we're doing related to equity now is a marketing recruitment. This is a key area for us at the college to make sure that we have a sophisticated program to attract all segments of our population in Eastern Queens, Nassau, and Western Suffolk, and making sure that we have, we continue to have a strong and diverse population. We've been doing digital advertising and geo-targeting all of the different populations in our area to make sure that they know that we have a strong summer program and fall program for them. One of the impacts of COVID-19 for us is that a lot of students have been forced back to, to join their families in Long Island. And we're trying to promote to them using two key elements, affordable tuition and transfer-friendly opportunities. And as you know, our summer population is made up predominantly of our own current students and making sure that we have a strong marketing approach to them as well. We're constantly analyzing our search engine optimization to make sure our keywords are strong and that we're driving traffic to our landing pages for both summer and fall. We're having good, good success early in driving people to our pages. And now that we have all of our courses loaded for the summer, I think we can experience some good uptick in our enrollment. We're working with our social media and printed materials to make sure that we continue to emphasize the strong and diverse population we have at Nassau Community College.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice President Kerrigan, for that. I also wanted to, although it's not on here, Vice President Kerrigan also is, he's our president of our, 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 our. He has been diligently in regards to our budget situation, which obviously didn't turn out the way we wanted it to for, for any of the community colleges within the SUNY system. However, that wasn't for lack of effort on, on our part in regards to being in front of all of our elected officials, both at the Assembly and the Senate, and pursuing those same opportunities with our county legislators. So I wanted to, even though it's not here, I wanted to say that he's been active with that as, as well. So, Vice President Isquero?
Okay, so as much, most of you know, the federal government has enacted a CARES Act that is, has given the college a $12 million grant, of which $6 million is to be used for students. The other $6 million right now, even though it's, it's for the college, it hasn't been set by the government to let us know how exactly we're gonna use it. I've given us broad guidance. So for the, but for the students, they actually have assigned a, a agreement, and it's been put up into the government site so they can draw down the monies. They said by Wednesday, but we're not sure when. We're hoping that what they will do is they'll just draw down, they'll run that down, the whole thing, and we'll be able to start giving out as grants to students. So what the government has done is given us flexibility on how we can distribute those funds. We cannot use it for tuition bills, so, and we don't want to use it for tuition bills. This is meant more for people that are affected with the pandemic. So one of the first things we're gonna look at in terms of distributing these funds is who has been affected by pandemic. And the other thing we want to look at is most need of the, of the people that are hit by the pandemic. And most of those are, of course, the Pell Grant recipients. There are others that do not have Pell Grants and may not be available to have aid. But we'll look at that on a separate, on a separate basis. So these, these grants will be going right through us. It will be, will be coming into us and going out to them. We won't ask them, we won't even, I guess we can suggest, but we won't suggest what they need, need to use it for. We just basically send it out to the students that use for rent, food, and so on. They do have to say what they're gonna, they do have to say what they're gonna use it for in terms of, of what they may want to use it for. But the definitely, the definite is that they have to be affected by the pandemic. We will administer this through the Controls Office, Student Financial Services Office. And next slide. Access to books. Joe had a little bit about the access to books and how, how we are doing this. And this is also my agenda item. One of these, one of the things that we need to do is increase student completion. We have books on the first day of class to students. That is a way to have, help the student complete their studies as well as retain them. Right now, the student pays an average current per credit cost of $36. Also for new books, most of the students may not resell, may not, may keep them and so on. But what we're looking for is to do a $26 per credit digital and rental option for students that will have the, the books to them when they start courses based on the adoption made by the faculty. There will be an opt-out option for a student. So if the student thinks that they can get better deals somewhere else, the opt-out option is all or none. The only caveat to that is that if there isn't OER carve-out. So if a book is found in OER, and that's open educational resource, and it can be found somewhere else, the bookstore will not charge that per credit. They'll carve that credit part out. Again, the responsibility for this will be to the Finance Office and the Student Financial Services Office. And we'll talk more about that on my, 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 my agenda items.
Great. Thank you, Vice President Isquero. So we have Dean Follett. All of you know, I think, I'm pretty sure. Dean Dave Follett, he's our Dean of Admissions, and he is here on behalf of Vice President Maria Gonzotti. So, Dean Follett? Everything okay, Dave?
Dr. Williams, can you hear me?
Ah, yes, yes.
Okay. I was trying, trying with the headset, trying with my headset, didn't work, so I apologize.
Got it done now. Thank you, Dave.
Okay. Just to give an update of where we are within the Student Services Center, Center. All services, admissions, registrar advisement, placement testing are fully remote. All offices have created Google phone numbers, so the professional staff are able to make and receive calls to prospective students, current students, and their guardians. The, all offices are actively engaging in their departmental emails. We're trying to get a response back within 24 hours during business hours. We plan to do that throughout the summer. As it gets busier within certain offices, the shifting may, the shifting may occur to a little bit longer, but we try to get, make sure to get back in a very quickly and efficient manner. We've added some, we're look, we've added, and we're looking to add some additional functionality for some online, online software. So Chatbot is a frequently asked questions that we're going to integrate into many of our departmental websites, as well as other online reservation systems, so students can sign up for Zoom appointments, whether on the admission side, on the academic advisement side. So we're gonna be moving very quickly to get, integrate all those into our daily business processes and then continue throughout the fall and spring semesters using these as well. On the next slide. Just within the Admissions Office, we have contacted 300 prospective students who were missing their high school transcripts. So the, my office reached out to the school counselors, as well as we also reached out to the individual students to advise them to send that electronically. We've received about half of those transcripts in less than a week, which is very, very, been very efficient. And we're also able to answer a lot of their questions. We are continuing to do this with our transfer students as well. So we've satisfied the high, high school students. Now we're doing the transfer students. Typically, with our students who are in our 24-credit GED program, they used to have to come on in for a personal interview. We have now turned that into a video that we send out and to acknowledge all the questions, and then we can engage them and some questions that they may have afterwards. A large population of our students are high school enrolled, high school enrichment students that are just finishing their senior year and either are enrolling at, into Nassau or are going elsewhere but need to take some prerequisites. So we are working through those students virtually through Zoom, as well as phone calls, to get them enrolled for this summer. In addition, we have a good number of students that still need to take the placement test. So with the College Board, they originally were trying to figure out how to do this remotely. We are, our placement testing staff is working with the College Board to hope to identify an online platform that will be work for both, for many of our students that need English, math, or the reading tests. So we hope to have more information for that in the next week or two. Happy to announce that working with SUNY Administration, the Admissions Office will be hosting a a virtual information session for 45 minutes on April 21st. SUNY has done all the PR for this, so we're very excited. We're going through some training. We have close to about 50 reservations already on this, for this session, which is a week away. On the next slide, it tells you a little bit about what the Registrar's Office has been up to. They've been very busy notifying all the students who are currently registered for our summer classes that were originally face-to-face or online, have now been shifted to an online or remote class delivery. So the students that were looking for face-to-face have been contacted. We've now updated the entire summer schedule for those two options. We have a multitude, we have three different summer sessions that will be offering classes in May, sorry, in June, July, and August. They've been working with the Marketing and Communications Department to go out, to do some outreach. We had our first wave launched. We're working through those inquiries. As many other offices, they are now doing a lot of their business processes, change of program and withdrawals online. Grade rosters are going online as well. Fall registration for all current students will open at the end of April on the 27th. So it's a little bit past where we typically do it, but with all the changes with the summer and the, we had to give a little bit of time. And that actually will go nice, ties nicely into our academic advisement slide, which is the next slide. All currently enrolled students have access to the professional advisement system, either through email, phone, or Zoom appointments will be happening. Typically, the Academic Advisement Office typically handles the liberal arts students. This year, or this summer, they have expanded to really try to get as many majors as possible, just because of the changing landscape. New freshmen will be registered with the appropriate credits and courses through the Zoom and the advisement and the Registrar's Office. Transfer students will be treated just like our currently enrolled students. So they will be contacted to set up appointments, get their credits evaluated, and to hopefully set up their appointments. and to hopefully uh, set up their appointments by the end of uh, end of April, early May. The last uh, slide. Uh, we'll be changing it over now to the academic affairs office, but as you can see, they've been, in less than three weeks, we've really transformed our offices into remote offices and it's uh, working very seamlessly.
And uh, and thank you Dave very much, I want to just go quickly back here because I know we're, we're only having a few minutes, I asked, asked everyone, it only take a few minutes. This academic advisement piece is, is huge, all of what everybody's saying is, is really big, extremely important. This component of advising all majors, as many majors as possible. And it really speaks to the guided pathways, helping students identify a path, helping them get on a path early, um, as early as possible. This is a, a new approach, a more robust approach. I would say it's just, it's more expansive in regards to what was already occurring in the academic advisement area, all the good work that they were doing. They're now, you know, more people can avail themselves of that. It's really going to help our students in, in regards to helping them identify what they want to do, knowing that what that path is and ensuring that they're on, you know, they're pursuing the, the right steps. So I know Dave eloquently went over it in a very succinct manner, but I wanted to just reinforce it because it is a, it's a pretty monumental step here uh, for us at the college. And um, we're looking forward to putting the resources behind this initiative, just like the other initiatives. So thank you Dave very much. Um, and Dr. Collins, um, for our last second.
Uh, I'm here. Um, my first slide please. Uh, good evening everybody, a little over a month ago, uh, the deans and the ABPs and academic affairs met to implement a learning continuity plan. And what's listed on here are the many things that we addressed. Working with deans and chairs, over ninety percent of courses were transitioned from face-to-face to remote using email and Zoom conferencing. Since most students have a phone, equitable teaching and learning modalities have been maintained. The minimum that you really need to do so the student can earn college credit for the course as uh, discussed uh, with the education department and SUNY is email and Zoom conferencing. So this was a very important uh, concern for us because many of the students don't have computers at home. They can access this technology using a phone. At the same time, the allied health and nursing clinical and lab courses and science laboratory courses were transitioned to remote using assignments and virtual labs. So we did a lot of research into what courses uh, could use virtual labs. Uh, the science courses found them very useful. We were able to uh, use that as well in nursing and then everybody filled in with assignments as well. Uh, the focus uh, right from the beginning was keeping the students in the car, the courses. So when we realized we were going to remote, we asked all the faculty to email every student in every class regarding the move to remote. Subsequently, chairs worked with faculty to identify unresponsive students. Uh, keeping that contact really was the focus. An email contact was also established called academics@ncc.edu for students to identify concerns. Additionally, our, additionally, our clerical staff worked with the uh, with the students. Excuse me, our additionally, our clerical staff uh, worked with the information we had about students to contact them and to report back and uh, allow for some follow-up in the various areas, of course, including student affairs and academics. Uh, once we were set up, we continued remote tutoring in the department help labs in areas such as math, English and reading. Faculty identified students who did not have necessarily, necessarily laptops at home to complete coursework as part of the college-wide effort to ensure laptop access to students. Faculty are using creative ways to converse with students such as town hall meetings. And one example was deans, chairs and faculty and students from the departments of accounting and criminal justice found the town halls, a great way to communicate. Everybody in a large Zoom meeting uh, going back and forth in discussion and they had found that very helpful. The Office of Distance Education was there right from the beginning, supported faculty and students with additional resources through new videos and step-by-step guides. Blackboard shells were created for all spring courses and populated with a starter template to aid faculty who had never used this platform. So the next uh, slide please. Uh, many positive comments I want to mention from faculty and students who use the Zoom audio and video conferencing. Students said they could be present wearing just about anything, they didn't have to get dressed to go to school and lots lots of good comments back on this. So our focus is to continue the current practices to reinforce student success to achieve a positive impact on teaching and learning. The Office of Distance Education continues to work with faculty to strengthen their use of instructional technology and to reduce the digital gap. SUNY also has been very helpful with providing resources for the college. Going forward, we're using uh, the attendance confirmation to determine if students have attended regularly. And faculty and staff continue to reach out to students, this has been a challenge. The students that are in the Zoom courses can have their attendance taken uh, every day. So it's another good reason for using Zoom. Our offices of workforce development and lifelong learning staff moved their classes to remote, canceled classes that could not go remote and continued ongoing scheduling to, of remote classes. And they also worked with the vendors to offer new courses. So they have continued uh, to move forward and maintain this important communication that we have with the Nassau community. The Office of Distant Education also continues to conduct training and provide drop-in centers to support faculty as they prepare for summer online and remote teaching. And then the last slide please. In spring twenty twenty, NCC offered a total of seven hundred and ninety-one courses. Now, of course, we have many, 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 many sections of those courses. With the exception of eleven courses, the remaining seven hundred and eighty courses were transitioned to remote instruction. One hundred and seventy-nine students were impacted by the eleven courses which were unable to transition, and that was initially to remote learning. Each of our professional programs such as allied health, respiratory care or nursing have their own discipline accreditor. So we moved within the confines of the discipline of creditors. As the weeks have gone by, there have been some loosening of these uh, expectations of, from the specific creditors and we have been able uh, to move forward, thank you.
Thank you Vice President Collins and thank you all uh, for, for sharing that. It was a high-level perspective that we wanted to get across to the board in regards to answering questions you may have um, that really kind of are aligned with how are we utilizing the resources to continue to meet the mission of the college, given what has, has transpired? And what are we looking to do moving forward to continue to meet the mission of the college? Um, addressing equity issues, knowing that our, our future is, is uncertain. So that was a, it was kind of a, more of a high level, you know, twenty minutes or so presentation. So I appreciate your, your attention. Is there any questions from board members? Uh, we'd be happy to, to address those or we could keep, keep moving through the committee agenda.
I actually have a couple of questions. Williams?
Yes, thank you, thank you Trustee Durso.
Okay, um, with regard to the advertising, um, hold on a second, let me just take the uh, this off. The uh, they were talking about geo-fencing. And I was curious as to how that went and um, also regarding uh, you talking about digital and I, social media, geo-fencing, uh, what about any of the traditional sort of uh, methods? Is that continuing, has that started? Uh, like, uh, I think it was yesterday or the day before, I was flipping through Newsday and I saw full page ads from Suffolk Community College. Uh, and I see that on a regular basis. And I don't, I, I never see anything from us, you know, and uh, for those who are not as um, as with it socially or uh, with the uh, computers and all. That's a, that's sort of a um, a shot, or you know, that, an opportunity that we lose. So I'm curious as to where we are with, with something like that.
Sure, absolutely, I know that.
On, that could, could answer that?
Yep, I, I know that Adrian can um, can get into a little more detail. What I will share is that um, I know recently he and a few others had a conversation with Furman Roth, who's our external marketing advertisement firm. And everything is, everything is on the table, they're completely uh, looking at what, what they provided for us and what we need in order to successfully move forward. I've heard since I've arrived that our marketing budget has been somewhat decimated and I've, I've uh, been pretty transparent that um, we need to receive a proposal that's going to help us achieve our goals. And then we can see how that fits within, within the budget. Um, but we shouldn't be starting with a, a particular set and then saying, this is, this is all we have. So we've really kind of tried to expand what our request was and then see how we can best meet that. And I think Adrian can talk a little bit more detail in regard to the question specifically you had about print and our other mechanisms.
Yeah, certainly, thanks uh, Trustee Durso for the question. Uh, I think our geo-targeting and our geo-coding uh, techniques are working very strongly as it relates to digital marketing. We're getting a really good return and we've had a thirteen, four point five percent click-through rate uh, in bringing people into our summer landing page, which is really above the average. So uh, we're, we've got some good things going. We're trying to blend both digital and print in the right way. We're doing a lot of postcard mailing, direct mail to uh, targeted constituents that we've got good lists on that Dave gives us for making sure we're targeting those things. When it comes to Newsday and a lot of the uh, branding that goes on there, we've been really using the resources we have to target more the digital. We're reserving our branding campaigns for a little bit later in the year as we get closer to fall and the like. Uh, as you saw with the uh, the um, Suffolk ads, they're more for branding than they are uh, targeting for enrollment. So we've been really focused on enrollment, marketing at the moment. But as we get a little bit more winter on, under our sails, we'll move a little bit more strongly into the branding uh, component.
Okay, thank you, I was just, you know, with the fact that the students are home and they're not away at schools anymore. The opportunity for us to grab uh, the students before uh, if and when they do go back or possibly they won't go back. So that the parents are the ones that uh, will see the uh, the traditional newspaper as opposed to the students and maybe engage them in that conversation. That's what maybe, that's what grabbed me when I saw it.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I think the, the direct mail that we're doing has been having some good effect as it gets the parents involved in making sure that the, the webpages and the things we're doing are received in print so that they can encourage their students to make sure they're uh, checking their um, their emails and looking at those uh, websites.
Thank you, but the, the numbers that you gave with regard to the uh, results, I think would have been very, very helpful in your presentation so that we have a better understanding of it for what it's worth.
That's good to know, thank you.
Okay, um, I did have a question for Dave, where's, I'm looking, I'm trying to look at the picture, there he is, Dave, put your arm down, we, I can't see you. Um, you're talking about uh, testing and placement. Okay, what determines uh, the testing uh, requirement?
We have uh, cutoffs regarding the placement uh, testing, whether it be ACT, SAT, and we've incorporated the New York State Regents, the Algebra I in the English Language Arts exam. So um, currently right now, we're going through those for the students that need those exams. So um, if they, if the students have the set criteria, they do not need to set, they do not need to test for that area of discipline. So we have about.
A student graduates with a Regents diploma, he doesn't need to be tested?
Um, if they've reached, if they have the certain cutoff, if they have an eighty GP, eighty, or um, they have a seventy-nine on the English Language Regents or an eighty on the Algebra I Regents, they wouldn't need to test in that discipline. So we have a good number of students that need to take the placement test, just given their, that they have not hit those scores.
Okay, and how many do we, do we lose when uh, when it comes to with the placing, with the placement, people who just like, I'm not going there?
As in after the placement test or before the placement test?
They determine that people want to come and apply and are accepted, but then when they're tested, then they need to go for testing.
Are admit to.
Somebody has a uh, a Regents diploma and he didn't, didn't reach the level that you're talking about. How many of those students then turn around, walk away and don't come to Nassau?
Um, or our admit to enroll is about seventy-eight percent. So, so if we admit them and then they enroll, it's a set, we capture them at about a seventy-eight percent yield rate.
Okay, thank you.
Can I piggy, when you're done, Mr. Durso, I want to piggyback on your question.
Okay, I just have one more, one more question. When we went to um, video and in Zoom and all of that. How many students did we wind up losing that didn't connect, didn't continue? Uh, do we have an idea of, you know, what we lost there? Students weren't able to, to manage with the uh, the Zoom, the video conferencing or doing things by phone? We have, do we have any sort of, have we been able to capture that amount? And I don't know who that, who questioned, whether it's you Dave, Dr. Williams or whoever.
I know, I can start off and I think maybe Dave or Valerie might have some, some kind of support. But I know when we had first started, the withdrawal rate was, was very similar. That was within the first maybe week or so, um, in regards to students withdrawing from, from courses. There was not a, a huge bump given the, the situation, that was from uh, year to year. Um, now, most recently, I would have to get you the updated numbers, Dave, I don't know if you've seen something a little more recent than okay, or Valerie, um, but we can definitely, Valerie?
I know, I know that Marie, Marie.
Go ahead Dave.
I know that Marie and I were talking and the rate was not um, what the registrar's reported to her was not at a very um, high rate at all. The first couple of days was much higher and it's definitely lessened as students become more familiar and comfortable.
And I would like to add that um, if the student has the phone, they can access the email and they can access the conferencing through Zoom. So, and that was the minimum and we went by, you know, Department of Education SUNY uh, guidelines so that we would have the minimum, knowing that many of our students don't have the computers at home, but they we again, we were making an assumption that most have the phone because equitable teaching and learning was the goal. We didn't want to lose students who weren't able to have the technology at home. And uh, and that, that was why we, we chose that focus.
Thank you, and just to, and just so you know, we are, we are keeping track, the students are withdrawing because of the COVID. I think the registrar is doing that uh, so that we can uh, communicate with them and seeing if, if it's actually uh, do they need to withdraw or, or if, if they need some kind of other help? So they also go through advisement before they actually withdraw, am I correct Dave? And I'm just, it's based on conversations from Maria.
That is correct, there, before a student does withdraw, there is a, a personal phone call that's uh, with the student to make sure that all options have been exhausted. In addition, I believe the institution is also for students that don't have the technology. There's some laptop uh, distribution that's well underway that I want to say, six hun, five or six hundred, I want to say? That we're shipped, that we're mailing out, so looks like Best Buy probably uh, right now with all those uh, laptops. But I know, I know that the, between the campus and SUNY, the technology is, is reaching the students' needs.
Can I follow up John?
Trustee Weiss wanted to uh, to say.
Yeah, Dave, Dave, you have to put yourself back on. Um, because my question has to do with, again, you know, me and the placement tests, which I absolutely hate. There are going to be some students who might have taken the, what? There might have been some students who would have taken the English Regents, which is no longer being offered now, because there are seniors who take it. What are we going to do for those kids now that the English Regents has been scrapped for this year?
What are we going to do for those kids now that the English Regents has been scrapped for this year? Please don't tell me they automatically have to take the placement test.
So right now, we haven't seen too many, the, the students who have applied have sat through the Regents. We will be moving forward and then in future years, obviously for next year's class, um, have to have a much more robust conversation about that, of what we're going to do. But, uh, we are meeting with the Academic Senate as well as, um, there's conversations with the Math Department because there's a high number of students right now that just need math placement. So we're having those conversations, um, with the Academic Senate and the Math Department. But so far, we haven't seen too many of the students with the English, lacking the English Regents right now.
So respectfully, that's because those would be the kids who will be applying later.
Correct.
And more likely would be the kids who are procrastinating in, in applying to college to begin with. Um, so I'm just asking that the administration think about how we're going to handle those kids rather than add more kids to taking placement exams that should be replaced by high school GPAs. My opinion, my opinion, um, but an opinion I hope that eventually the board will discuss because placement exams don't speak for what kids learn.
Uh, I just want to go on record, jot this down, Dr. Weiss. This doesn't happen too often, but I agree with her.
Yes, me too. John, and Bridget, I heard you say you do?
Yes, one hundred percent. Yeah.
All right. So it's something the board needs to tackle. I mean, you know, the administration needs to look at, and it sounds like something the board may have to approve, as I recall, but I won't get into what the administration has to-
Kathy, I agree also.
Thank you.
George Sevedom.
Hi, George. Thank you.
Yep. All right. Um, the next item on our agenda is the Comptroller's Report.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone is well. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Uh, as you're all aware, we missed, uh, last month's, uh, report, so I'll go back to, uh, the report from March's, uh, Board of Trustees Finance Committee Report, which, uh, is related to January's examination of OTPS and personal service expenditures. My office reviewed twenty expenditures, um, for appropriateness in accordance with Code of Rules and Regulations for Community Colleges. Uh, the twenty expenditures ranged from approximately a hundred and three dollars to three hundred and thirty-three dollars and averaged about sixty thousand dollars. The cumulative value was about one point two million dollars and represented about twen- seventy, seventy-two percent of, uh, January's expenditures. The items reviewed were generally in conformity with, uh, the criteria that was referred to in subsection C. There were no purchases that were between the ten percent and a hundred, a hundred thousand dollars above BOT approval in January. In, uh, regard to the personal service expenditures, there were two contracts that we reviewed for, uh, photography services for the college and modeling services for the college, both totaling, uh, thirteen hundred dollars and they were both reviewed and were in conformity with the criteria as well. I'll move forward to the April report, which includes the AR aging as well. Uh, so going back to the OTPS expenditures, there were sixteen that were audited for appropriateness and ranged in dollar value from about thirty nine hundred dollars to three hundred and ten thousand dollars and averaged sixty-four thousand dollars. The cumulative value of the sixteen expenditures was about one million dollars and represented fifty-nine percent of February's expenditures, and they were reviewed and were in conformity with the criteria presented in subsection C. There were no purchases between ten percent and a hundred thousand dollars above original Porter Trustee approval, and there were also no personal service expenditures during the month of February. Moving forward to the aging report, uh, the, the graphs have changed slightly just to present a little bit bigger on a landscape for both instead of, uh, mushing them onto one page. Uh, and we consistently continue to collect to average tuition over the eight prior fiscal periods, not including the current period of 2020, about a ninety-eight point two percent as is presented in that first graph on page four or five. On page five of five, uh, things were slightly moved around as well, but, uh, just to go back to the Nassau County Audit that we continue to, uh, keep track of, we are, we collected about thirty-six point six thousand into two thousand twenty, which is, you know, just tracking away of that, at that amount. And we are at forty-four percent collected of that total amount. And that is all to date, we have collected, uh, where are we? About one point nine million dollars of the total AR that remained for fiscal twenty twenty.
Any questions? Thank you. Next item, uh, number six is the IRS audit.
So, uh, when we see the letter for the IRS, uh, back in February, uh, before the pandemic happened, uh, and basically they are going back to the year two thousand seventeen and auditing our four oh three B plans. Um, so, uh, the four oh three B plans are run by third-party payers. Uh, so we, we need cooperation with SUNY and the county since they actually transmit the funds. Um, um, and they came as a deadline originally of, uh, I believe it was, uh, ninety days. But we, since then, we've contacted him and SUNY has contacted, we've had joint meetings with SUNY and the auditor. And, uh, based on what's happening, we're postponing everything until such time that we can get information to him. Uh, doesn't mean we've stopped, just means we slowed down. Um, so our meetings are continuous with them, uh, through our HR office. Uh, and, uh, I believe our next meeting will be next week. It was SUNY, SUNY is actually, uh, doing the bulk of the work on this. So I've just included every part of the letter just for your information in terms of the audit.
Just to comment, the materials they're asking for are onerous. I mean, I could not believe the amount of information that they're asking for each person that's involved in a four oh three B plan. Has SUNY, Julio shared with us, are we the only SUNY college that's got one of these four oh three B audits?
No, uh, not, well, currently maybe. I haven't asked it currently, but this, this is not unusual.
Okay.
They had the same audit done, uh, maybe nine years ago. Um, so, uh, it's not an unusual audit.
Leo, have you done these before?
Have I done this before?
Yeah.
Uh, I've, I've, I've not done them, the audit, but I've been through them, yes. Uh, so the-
It's like having dental surgery without the anesthesia.
The, the good thing about it is that we have the, the third-party payers that actually have all the information. Uh, so they're actually, uh, and it's, it's two thousand seventeen, so it's all the information that, uh, it's hard to obtain from our side. But on their side, yes, but right, it is, it is a little difficult.
Went through, uh, when I first became president of my local, I went through a, uh, Department of Labor audit. They sat in my office for a year. But we threw everything, and at the conclusion, he suggested that we put our checks in a different, uh, place that he wanted to protect it. It took you a year to figure that out.
They, they had to find something. If that's all they found, that's good.
All righty, uh, the budget presentation is next.
Okay. So, uh, basically, I'm gonna, I'm gonna present to you, uh, the first, I don't know, what percent will be the twenty twenty budget. Uh, I might also, I might run down the line of what I'm gonna present before I present it, just so you're familiar. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna review the fund balance, um, the budget calendar, uh, and show you the enrollment, FTE history and projections for next, to next year. Um, what we, what, where we stand in terms of tuition and fees with other area colleges, media colleges. Uh, I want to let you know what our expenses are by major categories, uh, what our revenue assumptions are for twenty twenty-one. And that will lead us into the twenty twenty-one proposed, uh, primary budget and proposed operating budget. So we're gonna start off with the, with the, with the, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty budget. Um, fiscal year twenty twenty budget, if you remember when we, last we met, we were doing well because we had enrollment better than expected uh, for the fall and the spring. Uh, unfortunately, uh, since we've met, uh, the pandemic happened and we're expecting summer not to be, uh, as, as expected. Um, so, uh, this, this, uh, budget projections, uh, it's inclusive, uh, inclusive of a thirty percent decline in enrollment for the summer. All right. So right now, uh, based on data that we're receiving, uh, it may be that, that, that may be the, the, where we're going to with this. So because of that, uh, the fund balance that wasn't going to be used, uh, will be used. Uh, we had budgeted to be used at six and a half million. Uh, we're putting it in as budget to, now projected to be used. Um, so, uh, that would, uh, balance, uh, the twenty twenty budget.
So a couple other, thank you, Julio, and, uh, we're gonna tag team this. A couple other, one big piece on that is the, the state aid in that slide that you are all looking at, that forty-two, nine and, and change. Um, as we know, the budget was passed, the state budget was passed, um, and it started in, in April. Right now, the State Budget Director and, and for this year has the authority to, um, reduce the budget. And from our understanding is, uh, that individual will be taking a monthly review at the budget for the first quarter and then reviewing every subsequent quarter. What this means and a takeaway for, for the board and for all of us is that, um, that forty-two nine could be reduced. Our fiscal year doesn't start until September one. Uh, so we are basing off of what we were allocated, what we, we, we were allocated, because that's what we allocated. However, the new situation, that forty-two nine could, could be reduced. That's the, the reality of our, our current si- situation. We will obviously keep the board apprised, but that's a, a big takeaway that, that we needed you to hear and we needed to share, so.
Are there any other questions regarding the budget?
We have to-
So that, that- You got a big piece painted there for you.
Yeah, I know. That leads us to the next page. The unrestricted fund balance. Um, because of the, the usage and, and if, uh, this one is a, was a preliminary version of it, and I, I actually put the, the, the wrong version of it into the packet. Um, I don't know if we can get the correct version up and share.
Everyone, everyone should see it, right?
Okay, so, so basically, um, we're starting with the unrestricted fund balance in two thousand nineteen of fifteen million dollars. Uh, use for twenty twenty budget, six and a half million dollars, which would leave us at eight point five million dollars. Um, and then we do the test of where we need to be. As board policy, we, the minimum, uh, the minimum, um, percentage from prior years, um, unrestricted fund balance, as a, as a percentage of prior year fund balance, has to be four to seven percent. Um, based on what we're going to use for this current year, we're sitting at four point zero seven percent. Uh, and, and the reason this is important is because this means that, wow, we're, that fund balance is not a, a, a tool that we can use for budget, because we need to maintain the, the floor of at least four percent. Policy. Any questions on this slide? And as Dr. Williams said, that the reason we're using six and a half million is because of the decrease in the summer, uh, and the rents and commissions and so on, a lot of things that, that were negotiated. And there were things negotiated actually pre-pandemic that were going to hit this budget in, in any case. Uh, so the instant, the non-credit enrollment and the rents and commission were being, uh, uh, hit hard even before the pandemic. Um, the rents and commissions were being renegotiated because of folate and, and the, uh, bookstore, the bookstore and the, in the food service as not, because of our declining students, they were already trying to renegotiate the terms, uh, which we had to because their business, we need to make sure that, that they, that they stay in business. Any questions on this?
I just want to unmute myself. I'm sorry. Um, could you just repeat the board? The board policy says the fund balance must be between four to seven percent. Is that what you said, Julio?
Yes.
Okay. So, so we are at the base, we are at the base-
The very bottom.
Yeah, we are in a very, um, that's one of the reasons why we are, and I'll, I'll repeat it, um, why, Julio, it's very important for us to share, given the fiduciary responsibility of the, the board, is that the board policy is four to seven percent. That's, that's the actual minimum, four to seven. There's a range. And we're literally on the precipice of going below the minimum of the minimum.
So I before, I, I was going to ask Dr. Gordon to remind me when we voted on this, but, um, what is the SUNY recommendation for, uh, the fund balance? Because there is a recommended amount. Don't know. Remember, George, we voted to change this a couple of years ago?
Well, actually, what we ended up doing was we took a, a board resolution because we actually went below the four percent. So we did it, uh, with a resolution, knowing that we were in dire straits at that time a few years back. We dipped down, I think we went down to about three point seven something, uh, for a short period of time until we recovered. Um, the issue that we're going to have here is these are projected amounts now with just taking into account what's happening in the summer, uh, but not taking into account what's going to happen in the fall. So, um, for, uh, for the rest of the members of the board, we just have to be aware that, uh, Julio will keep us apprised of where we are with fund balance. And we may nee- need to do a board resolution if we have to dip into that due to emergencies, if all the actions that administration is contemplating and looking at are not totally effective.
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Uh, the next slide is the twenty twenty-one budget calendar. And we just wanted to assure our board members, our community, that we are on target with the calendar. Um, I know with all the, the upheaval, it's kind of easy to, to think, uh, and I received a call from someone the other day saying, we haven't, we haven't talked with you yet, and it says, well, we are, we are on target, you know, uh, for this, for this period of time. Uh, so we're presenting this to, to committee today. Um, in between today and the next board meeting where there will, uh, be a vote, we will meet with our county partners, we'll meet with the, excuse me, uh, both the majority and minority caucuses, and we'll meet with the county executive and her representative, probably, uh, or, or deputy as, as well. So we will go through those processes and bring back to the, um, the board for a vote at the May meeting. And then it will go, as you all know, to the legislator, to both of those, uh, meetings, the, the eighth and then the full meeting, which would be the, the twenty-nine. So unless something occurs, we just wanted to put this in so that everyone is, uh, can rest assured that we are on target, we are on the same trajectory that we've been in the past, uh, with, with getting our, our budget together and, and getting it passed. The, the next slide is the Student FTE Fiscal, excuse me, from twenty-one to, excuse me, two thousand eleven to two thousand twenty-one. And what we wanted to share here, what's important to take away, there are several things. Um, one, we're on target to be about forty-three percent down in FTE over a ten-year period. Okay, just forty-three percent FTE over a ten-year period. We have an average of being down seven percent in FTE each year for the past five years. So while the numbers we're seeing, um, are in part due to some uncertainty based on a global pandemic, this storm has been brewing, um, for, for, for several years. Um, and we'll get into a, a little bit later in regards to how we've weathered the storm through, um, you know, tactics such as reducing part-time and reducing overtime and using fund balance. And the reality, and I'll share a little later, is that we don't, we don't have those levers to pull anymore. We don't have those buttons to push anymore. But this is an important slide so that we can see, uh, where we are, which i- it really leads into, um, our tuition and fees and, and those rates. And you'll, you'll see that, um, and I know, Julio, you want to- And you'll you'll see that, and I know Julio, you want to share kind of the the introductory information that's there, and I could talk a little bit about behind the scenes piece.
The tuition and fees, we're looking at the the area colleges and it'll show you that we are the highest of all the community colleges in the area at three thousand sixty-five. In terms of the assumptions, you want to go through the assumptions, Dr. Williams, or?
Absolutely, so. And I just, before we go through, yes, I just want to contextualize the the tuition and fee rate slides a little bit in regards to our our competitors, right? So when we think about this budget and we think about what you'll see in a few minutes, as far as a a few different scenarios that involve that involve tuition, we look at our competitors and we think about the fact that we've lost more students at a faster rate. And one of the ways in which you have a budget is you increase tuition. You're forced to increase tuition because you're you're losing students, and that's one of the the legs that we have. The state funding has, you know, really stayed the same, actually gone down because FTE has gone down. The county funding has stayed the same, and when everything else increases, then that same dollar doesn't stretch as far. So the other other leg of the stool that we've had for several years has been the the fees, the tuition fees. And and so when we look at why we're higher than our competitors, that's one of the reasons why they have not dropped in regards to FTEs at the same precipitous rate that we have. They've done things such as really delve deep into or kind of dove deep into dual enrollment, which, you know, Suffolk County Community College has four to five thousand students who participate in dual enrollment, which increases their FTE by more than eleven hundred a year. FTE by eleven hundred a year. So they're getting tuition and they're getting the two thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars per FTE for those additional eleven hundred students. So just wanted to contextualize that a a little bit, and, you know, part of the reason why we are 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 higher. When we look at the revenue assumptions, as I was mentioning, some of these are due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, and some of these are there are, they're here because of situations that have been that have been created and situations, I will add that people are, everyone is diligently trying to to address. And and I and I would say this was really exemplified last year where we were facing a a huge decrease in enrollment in the middle of the summer, and so many people at the college got together and enacted ideas that really saw us come out stronger than we were trending and stronger than the decrease that the actual board had approved. So so it's here, we we have the effort, we have the tenacity, we have the wherewithal to do it. At the same time, we were budgeting for four to seven percent decrease before the actual pandemic, and you'll see that right now we've adjusted that to ten percent. I I'd like to share again that this is fluid. This this ten percent decrease is extremely fluid. There's a lot of talk in higher education in regards to what is going to happen in the fall. Some students do not want to go away, so they're going to stay home. Some students are going to stay home and they're going to stay close, and we would hopefully benefit from that. Some students are going to stay home and they're going to take what's called a gap year, which means they're they're not going to attend any institution of of higher education. And we would, we would not benefit from that. Some, right now, SUNY has taken an approach in regards to suspending, one moment, trustee Durso, suspending placement tests so they can have kind of a special population of admitted students, which may be students who would have attended a community college. So we have these swirling variables. Trustee Durso, you wanted to interject?
Oh, I'm, one of my staff was leaving, I just, he was.
Oh, oh, my apologies. I thought you had a question, my apologies. So we have these swirling variables in regards to what is what is occurring right now and what may be occurring in the fall. So just want to, one of the takeaways as far as the ten percent decrease is us using all of the intelligence that we have, both internally and externally, to provide this number to you, knowing that it is fluid. The other enrollments would be our non-credit. So that will be our continuing education pieces, a much smaller component, but we wanted to share that with you. Vice President Iskierdo shared the commissions piece. Again, this is a pre-pandemic. This is due to the fact that we have decreased in our number of students, and when the bookstore and, excuse me, our food service negotiated with us, they were not expecting that we would have such a a decrease in students, and therefore they're not seeing the profits that they expected to see during the negotiations. So we had to pivot, and in order to maintain a bookstore and food service, you know, quick work by our vice president of finance and facilities and and legal counsel, we had to to renegotiate some terms. State funding, as you know, we did not receive the floor, not the ninety-eight percent or the hundred percent. That's hitting us at four million dollars. That's four million dollars on top of a budget deficit that we were already realizing. And that's going to increase us for the next, excuse me, impact us for the next four years because it's done over a a three-year average as far as what we receive in regards to FTE from 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 the state. And the one last piece I'll share before we get into the the major categories is is also up in the air and something that I I need to share in full transparency is our funding from the county. We have not received any indication that that would change. The reality that we all know is that the tax revenue is not going to be the same. So while we are working diligently to receive the same amount at the very least and impress upon our county partners our importance to the county and to the communities, there's a a very real situation going on within the county and within the state where a lot of community colleges are are concerned in regards to what their county funding might be. So it's something we will keep the board apprised of, but it's a, again, an unfortunate reality, given given where we are, so.
May I ask a question?
Please, trustee Weiss.
Before you go to the next page, going back to the tuition and fees rates, I'm assuming that's the current rates. Is that a correct assumption?
Yes.
Okay. The other thing is I just, I need to repeat it again for myself, but I guess just to say it out loud about Suffolk having forty-five hundred dual enrollment students, some of whom we know are Nassau County students. But the impact that that's having on their budget, that that's, you you said eleven hundred FTEs that they're getting state aid on for those students, that would, that has a big impact on why they can keep their tuition down, but it also means they can offer more courses because they have more students who are taking a variety of courses. Is that a fair, fair assumption?
They have more, yes, they they have more demand, so they can supply more, they can supply more courses. Absolutely, Dr. Weiss. It's imagined, so we started our semester, our spring with about fourteen thousand six hundred or so students. Nine FTE students. If we added eleven hundred to that, which would even be more students, not, that would just, I mean, FTE, that's, now we're, that's a huge increase.
And as I understand it, you've been working diligently with the faculty and the senate to try to get it to the place where we can do dual enrollment because we know that the high schools in the county are anxious. There isn't a single high school we spoke to when we met with the superintendents that didn't want to do dual enrollment.
Absolutely, there's been great partnership at the college with our academic senate leaders, with our our union leaders and with faculty and and staff in general. And we do have some interested departments that are actively engaging in in dual enrollment, and we will force forward as quickly as possible.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So so the next, the next page you see is the expenses by major categories, and I think you're some of you are familiar, some of you are new, so you won't be familiar with this. But eighty percent, eighty-seven percent of our of our expenses is salary in fringes. Then you have utilities and plant expenditures were pretty much fixed expenses. So we need to pay that no matter if we have one student or ten thousand students. I mean, relatively, if we close buildings and so on, that's a different story, but but if we keep the plant open, those are fixed expenses. This is a fixed expense because those are, that's what we're paying for prior retirement incentives that we had, so we need to keep paying that. So those are also fixed. So the only thing that you're looking at in those, in in these categories, technology and equipment and other. Four percent of the budget that 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 can be looked at during the, when when we look at OTPS. And those those are the things that we focused on, including some of the plant expenditures when we, when we reviewed the twenty twenty-one proposed revenue budget and expense budget. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows what what we're facing in terms of. Okay, so the next, the next one you'll see is the twenty twenty-one revenue budget. So what I, what I've done here is I've given you, I've given us three choices for tuition increases. Zero increase, a hundred dollar increase, and a hundred fifty dollar increase. And the, and if you look at the zero increase, you will see that there's no fund balance used. So basically, it would be, it would be a balanced budget with a zero increase based on the expenses that we we will propose using. If we raised tuition, the way I am, I am included in here is to increase fund balance, not for, not to, not to increase tuition for purposes of adding more expense. That's the, that's what you see, that's zero, one hundred and one fifty, and that's annual increase. The, we we've taken hits in terms of assumptions, right? You'll see that student revenues are down, the course service fees go down with that. Revenue, or sponsorship shares are down. So you see mostly, most everything is is going downward. Any questions on the revenue side? Next. The next one is the 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 operating expenses. And again, it's based on the three scenarios. And you'll see that the they all, they all are basically the same in terms of all the expenses that are are being done. So you look at the budget versus twenty twenty budget, you'll see how the decreases that we're looking at in terms of of the amounts. So we're going from a total operating budget of two of two hundred and four million to a total operating budget of one hundred eighty-two million decrease. And then subsequently to that, I I do show you what the fund balance looks like. If we have a sub-zero dollar increase and everything works out the way we want it to, we still have four point two percent fund balance. So it maintains the fund balance under the nicking the the minimum required by policy.
So so a few things to consider as we, as we look at these scenarios, just to reiterate and pull us together. This is all based off of these three tuition scenarios, zero, one hundred dollars, a hundred fifty dollars. This is all predicated on a a ten percent enrollment drop, decrease, right, which is, which is fluid, right? And to put it in some other perspective, a fluctuation of one percent, either up or down, i- is about, it's a million dollars for the college. So you think about if it's, you know, nine percent, we've just, you know, put on a million dollars. If it's happens to be one percent in the other direction, that's a, that's a million dollars the other way. So when the board considers these options and you look at the fund balance, which is seriously low in regards to the actual floor of the floor, one percent towards eleven really puts us needing a million dollars of 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 fund balance. Knowing that our actual state aid could be reduced throughout the year is also a consideration that I want to bring back and reiterate to the board. I also want to share that we are also looking at supporting as many students as we as we possibly can. So the decision regarding a tuition increase is is obviously yours, at the same time, I'd be remiss if I, if I didn't share what I've, what's been shared with me by board members and and others, and that's, we've consistently increased tuition to to make our our budget, and and right now our student demographic is one that actually is is being hit hardest by this global pandemic. We all know that communities of color and low-income communities are being disproportionately negatively impacted. We need to think about our price point in regards to our competitors, our price point in regards to our students. We also need to obviously keep the the institution of higher education moving, right? We need the, we need the funds to do that. So this is not in any way an easy decision. I'm just reiterating some of the kind of key components and opening it up to any questions from from members of the board.
All right. President Jermaine, I was looking at here, and Julio, I'm going to ask you the question. I'm looking at the projected two thousand twenty salaries at a hundred and eighteen million, and I see the budgeted for two thousand twenty-one of a hundred and seven million, about eleven million dollars less. Where are we cutting that? Where's that coming from?
That would be a sorry, I was, I was, I was muted there for for a moment, so let me, so let me start over. So again, we've spent several years balancing the budget through fund balance and tuition increase and early percent, early retirement incentive programs. We would need to find a way to to manage that decrease. So that that's the, the the short version is that we'd have to find a way to manage that decrease. There's, there's no way to cut ourselves out of our current situation by looking at equipment or general expenses or or contractual.
Understood. The other question I have is, we gave, you gave us comparisons of what the tuitions were at the other area colleges. I'd like to know, can we figure out what their percentage is for salaries and fringes? Because I think eighty-seven percent is a little bit on the high side for our operating expenses. What are the other area community colleges, what is their salaries and fringes? So we can have a little bit of a reference point of where we probably should be.
We could absolutely get that information, Dr. Garden.
All right, I think we need to get that sooner rather than later. We need to see, are we at the mean or are we a standard deviation or two above? Any other questions?
Even if we're on the high side at eighty-seven percent as compared to some of the others, you're not about, you're not going to be able to get into where you want to be in one fell swoop. Okay, this is, this didn't happen since February with the pandemic. This has happened over the past ten years. So, you know, what you're talking about, when you're going from a hundred and eighteen to a hundred and seven, eleven million dollars, that transfer, that decrease in the budget only goes one place. And I think that's an area where you're going to have to be very, very careful of how you handle that because there's a atom bomb ready to go off.
Absolutely, and in the past, what we had done was we had offered incentives for retirement to encourage, you know, persons employed at the college to take an early retirement or or to to go off. But like I said, But like I said, I'm looking here at just a budgeted number and just trying to find out where that's coming from. Has that been evaluated or looked at or any ideas made? But again, I think that we need to, when they present a graph of expenses by major categories, we do need to see where we stand in relation to Suffolk Community College, Queensborough Community College, you know, just as as an, as a idea, as a point of reference.
Oh, George, I'm not arguing with you.
Yeah.
For saying that to go from where you, wherever we are to where this budget proposal for 21, you know, it's going to, pain is, pain is not the proper word.
Oh, this is a disaster.
This is an absolute disaster.
This is a disaster, there's no, you know, and I'm trying to, I I can't see a silver streak here anywhere. I'm just, I just bringing out the 800-pound gorilla on the page and and voice, putting a voice to it. It's like, where's this coming from? And I think that's going to be some hard question.
I don't think anybody on this call has any, is is unaware of where it's coming from.
And if I may, if I may suggest, we use the word a difficult situation, not a disaster. There's a lot of difficult decisions that have to be made. And I'm agreeing with John, some of it has to be done more slowly and some will have to be done more quickly. But some of this probably are things we need to discuss in exec because they would have personnel involved, personnel decisions that may be something we need to speak to the president about.
Without question. About twice every day.
Jeez, we're in trouble because I agree with both of you. Williams, anything else that you have?
I believe that completes everything unless there's any other questions with regard to Finance Committee.
There's one more item that we need to talk about, and that's the books for all, even though I presented it during my, during my.
Right, I thought you incorporated it, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay. The reason I put it on the agenda is because what I want to do is, what we want to do is set a fee on the fee schedule for the students to have the books in the the first day. So the fee will be less, on on the average, will be $10 less than what they're paying now. The fee will also be an opt-out fee. So if they don't want to use the, that mechanism, they can opt out. So in, and again, if if it's, oh, we are open educational resource material available, they will also carve that out. But if once you opt out, you opt out for everything, one one course. So I think that in order for, to deal with student completion and retention and so on, this is a great idea that has been offered to us in terms of of how we get books on on onto the hands of students, they that they, when they begin courses. Because we have students that don't have books and they will go to the library. They'll they'll try to get by because they can't afford it and so on. The other thing is it also puts it as part of their tuition bill. So I don't fork and can and can offset somebody's cost. Again, it's it's an opt-out fee that goes with it. So but I would, I would need to put it as part of the fee schedule on the, as part of the fee schedule when we, when we look at the fees for approval for next, next month.
So how how would it look on the fee schedule? Because the fee schedule currently, all right, that that we looked at. So are you saying that if a book is $50, it's 40? What are you talking about?
It would be a per credit fee.
I understand, because I couldn't hear everything you were saying.
I'm sorry, so it'll be a per credit fee. So if a student is taking 12 credit course, it'd be 12 credits, not 26, whatever that that equals.
John, if, John, if, as I understand, as I understand it, because I've heard about this at another institution, there's a flat fee depending on how many credits the student is taking. So if I'm enrolled in 12, Julio, is this correct? If I'm enrolled for 12 credits, there'll be X amount of money, whatever the number is, 12 times, what was it, $40?
26.
I made up the number, I'm close. And that would be $700, let's say, one time, the books will be in my hand on opening day of school. I don't have to accept that, I could opt out and go ahead and get the books individually on my own, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it, on my side.
Do you have any other questions, George? All righty, if not, then we take a motion to adjourn the Finance Committee.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Bridgette, unmute.
She did, she nodded.
Okay.
Okay.
Second, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, that concludes after that meeting.
Trustee, thank you so very much for chairing a very, very tough meeting. Okay, I'm going to go to Personnel, Affirmative Action, and Labor Committee. Wanda, you on, you on the line there?
Yes. Meeting open at 6:37. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 11?
I make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oppose, any abstentions? Item for discussion resolved pursuant to the terms of the Faculty Collective Bargaining Agreement and upon the recommendation of the college-wide promotion tenure, committees, the college administration, wait a minute, yeah, administration, the Personnel Affirmative Labor Action Committee here with affirmatively recommend or refers to the full board trustees for approval, the faculty members named herein to be promoted to the title and position as indicated herein.
Wanda, if you want, we can leave the minutes to the actual meeting.
Perfect.
All right, that's okay with everybody?
Let's go.
Yep.
Yep. Are there any questions? If I have none, do I have a motion to recommend this item to the full board for approval?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Second, thank you. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions? Chair, are there any other items for the committee's consideration? Hearing none, the meeting adjourned at 6:39.
Thank you, Wanda. We're going to go right to opening up the the meeting. And we're going to open this up at 6:39. And the 635th meeting of the Board of Trustees will come to order. I'm going to just say please rise and salute the flag. And I will rise, and I do have a flag somewhere. I pledge allegiance.
Oh, we've got a flag on our screens.
Beautiful. I pledge allegiance to the flag to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, visible liberty, and justice for all. Thank you. Trustee Durso, would you be kind enough to call the roll?
My pleasure. Thank God.
President?
Linda Grace, absent. Wanda Durso is here, Linda Green.
Is absent.
Absent.
Okay, Wanda Jackson.
Present.
Edward Powers.
Absent.
Donna, absent. George Seabron.
Present.
Bridgette.
Present.
Donna.
Present.
Who did I miss?
Kathy.
Oh, and Dr. Weiss.
Present.
We have a quorum of chairman.
Thank you, I'm going to request a motion that the board go into executive session pursuant to Section 105 of the Open Meetings Law for the following purposes. One, to discuss matters relating to negotiations involving Nassau Community College Administrators Association. Two, to discuss matters related to negotiations involving the SECFT. Three, of reviewing the medical, financial, credit, employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, removal of a particular person or corporation. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
Thank you, Donna. All in favor?
Aye.
Any against, any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. We will close this out and proceed with the executive session, zoom.
Check your emails, everybody, board members.
Okay.
You check your email and you'll have the invitation.
Thank you.